Welcome, everybody, to the Town Board Work Session of Tuesday, December 3rd, 2018. I apologize that we're in this room. The Planning Board was supposed to have a meeting. They canceled it. In that room, we need to have somebody who actually videotapes us, somebody from Newcastle, NCCMC. They're not here tonight, so we have to use this room, which is, you press a button and it tapes. So here we are.
We're on technology.
We have, to start off, we have two public hearings tonight, and the first is for our budget, which will not take that long.
Yes, it will.
The good news is, is the most people that have ever showed up for a budget hearing, so very exciting for...
Are you going to apologize this time, too?
Tom Chatterley. Rob is still upset because last year we had Boy Scouts, and I said, uh, for some other reason, I apologize that they had to sit through the budget meeting again. You get all offended. And I apologize to you guys, even though you're tax dollars. Go ahead, Rob.
Thanks for that great intro, Rob. As he said, this, this probably totals the entire amount of people that have seen this presentation in the prior nine years that I've given, so welcome to the 2020 Budget Presentation. And Rob's last.
No comment.
So I always just start out by, uh, just showing you a little bit of a timeline. It's a pretty lengthy process. Uh, I won't go through every bullet point, but we basically start in the middle of July, and, uh, we end next Tuesday with the adoption of the final budget. Um, along the way, Town Board gets a chance to meet with the department heads, Jill and myself, and we come up with, um, what we have tonight is called the Preliminary Budget, and that's what the Board will then turn into the Adopted Budget next Tuesday. In 2020, just talk a little bit about the tax cap information. Um, we've had the tax cap, I believe, for nine years now. Uh, the town of Newcastle, we're proud to say we have never had an override of the tax cap. Um, the tax cap is less than 2% or the rate of inflation. That would be the increase in the tax levy. The number that we got this year was 2%, uh, 2% last year also. Uh, there's one other number that goes into calculation of that. That's the tax-based growth factor. Uh, this number changes each year. The factor for the 2020 budget is 1.0095, and that's a slight increase from the prior year. Based on the formula and prior rollover amount that we have, the town could have actually increased the tax levy this year by 961,000 and still remained under the cap, but the actual tax levy increase was 622,000. It's about 2.91%. Uh, this is the chart that just shows how we actually calculate it. Um, if you look in the middle column, you have the 2019 actual tax levy, and once you go down, you add the tax-based growth factor to that, and then the tax cap, 2%. Then you add the carryover to that and get the total amount of tax levy we could've, uh, used was 22,362,000. And we actually used 22,023, so we're about 339,000 under the cap. Chart shows some historical information from 2011 through current. The pink line shows the rate of increase. Uh, it'll show you 2.91%, and the blue line is the total tax levy for each year. Budget summary, this is about the second or third page of the actual budget document. Shows the, the left column showing the appropriation, all the way down to the bottom, 43 million. That's the total budget amount for the town. The far right amount, the amount raised by taxes, 22,023. So in-between shows the actual revenue and some of the fund balance sources that we use.
Rob, while you have this up there, please very briefly explain the Northern Fire Protection District.
I will, but I have, can I go in order? Because I, I do have it in there, and we'll talk about that a little bit. But this, um, summary shows, uh, the total appropriation amount raised by tax for each fund in the town's budget. Just a few highlights from the budget this year. Um, once again, we were able to increase road paving. We've done that significantly since, uh, Rob became supervisor. That was one of his, um, I guess, key points that he, he'd always worked on in each budget, and we were able to add about 200,000 this year. We're up to 1.1 million dollars, which, if anybody remembers, maybe eight, nine years ago, there was actually a year that we really didn't pave anything. Um, so we're up to 1.1 million dollars in this budget. Uh, the current budget maintains funds for, uh, the Beautification Advisory Board, uh, Town Boards and Commissions, the Arts and Culture Committee, and Town Board Special Projects. Um, in this budget, we're actually able to replace some Parks Department equipment and vehicles that have been kind of, uh, long overdue. Uh, the budget also includes the purchase of the three new police vehicles, and we're adding three new full-time positions. Um, that would be one additional police officer, a laborer position, which is intended to be our hamlet caretaker, and a senior office assistant on public works.
As far as the police officer, we're sort of replacing one, even though since additional police officers, because we, we are, one of our police officers was basically always assigned to the school, and now that police officer is official school resource officer. So it's not, it's not really on our force anymore as far as covering ships and things like that.
Just showing a breakdown of all the funds. Um, as you see, the general, Town General and Highway, the largest share of the pie, about 66% of that. Next biggest is probably the Water District at about 9.6 million dollars. I'll just go over a couple of the key revenue sources now for the, uh, General Fund. The one that we've talked about quite a bit, and, uh...
Bless you.
Uh, the county sales tax, we've actually upped that to about 3.3 million this year. Um, as everybody probably knows, the county has added an additional 1% sales tax, and, um, the town expects to receive $750,000 additionally, um, as a result of that additional 1%. Uh, the state aid mortgage tax, we've actually dropped that about 50,000 this year. Um, the first payment, we get two payments a year. The first one in June was not great. Um, it's a little bit below 50% of what we were expecting, so in anticipation of that and, uh, potential downturn in the market, we've lowered that expectation about $50,000. Uh, commuter parking fees, that's the money we get from the parking lot. Uh, 950,000, that remains unchanged from the prior year. We expect a slight increase in building permits. Expect to bring in about 950,000. Um, concession income, this is what comes in from, uh, rent from the train station, also the franchise fees we receive from the cable companies. We expect about 475,000 next year for that. And summer camps, we expect to remain unchanged at about 485,000. Uh, the other smaller funds have fewer revenue sources other than, uh, your tax dollars. So the Highway Fund, the biggest significant, uh, revenue source there, it comes from state aid, from CHIPS. Um, we budget 225,000. The last couple of years, we have received additional allocations throughout the year. We don't know that at budget time, but we have received additional money for, uh, the Extreme Winter Recovery Program in Pave New York, and when we have those additional funds, we also put those into road paving, which we did in 2019. Uh, the Water Fund, uh, water sales account for general water sales, about 4.5 million, and the water sales to the town of Pleasantville, uh, 1.5 million. Refuge Fund, uh, again, very few sources of revenue. We sell compost and mulch there. We expect about 50,000 from the sale of that, and, uh, processing of yard waste, about $30,000. Again, a pie chart showing, uh, where all the revenue comes from. Just a little over 50% of the revenue comes from property taxes. Okay, talk about a couple of the key, um, elements on the expenditure side. Expenditures that affect multiple funds, uh, the employee benefits, very big part of the town's budget. Um, health insurance. We projected about a 3% increase this year, uh, and we were right on with that from the numbers that we've seen from our health insurance. That should be about 4.8 million. Uh, the retirement system, it did increase slightly, but not too much, uh, up to about 2.1 million, and workers' comp costs about 431,000. I'll remind everybody, a couple of years ago, we changed workers' comp carriers. The quote we had that one year was over 900,000 for our workers' comp coverage, so we brought that down significantly. Other debt fact, uh, other expenditures that affect, uh, all our funds are the debt payments. Uh, that's the capital cost. Those are about 3.1 million next year, and legal expenses about 508,000. Okay? Uh, carry on with the expenditures in the Highway Fund. As we talked about before, 1.1 million dollars for road paving and permanent improvements. Uh, salt, we actually increased, we have increased, increased this the last couple of years, and we're seeing a higher frequency of storms, um, so we have increased that to about 295,000. The overtime and salaries is the overtime for our public works workers, 195,000, and, uh, also kind of weather-related brush and tree work. We have 175,000 dollars budgeted. Okay, expenditures in the Water Fund, uh, the cost of raw water. Um, and the two numbers that are split up are because we share operations with Pleasantville. But the combined cost of the raw water that we purchased is about 3 million combined. The water treatment plant operations, almost 1.1 million. That comes from, uh, our contractor that works there. Uh, we pay to have the plant operated each month. And the electricity is probably the next largest factor. For the water treatment plant, that number is about $500,000. Where you see the electricity for the Proton backup, that totals, uh, about 175,000. That's, uh, we need to use that pump when our primary water source is turned off. Very soon, yes. Um, expenditures in the Refuge Fund, our contract for refuse collection is, uh, about 1.1 million dollars, and the transfer site charges, those are tipping fees for the garbage, uh, about 523,000. Just a pie chart to show where the total expenditures are. See contractual costs make up the largest portion, about 36%, and employee benefits down there, about 20%, and personnel, about 31%. So I've just taken this chart, and what I've done is, uh, averaged an average tax bill for the town, and this just encompasses the General and Highway Funds. Those are the only two districts that each and every resident pays. Most residents pay water, most residents pay refuse, but everybody pays the General and Highway Funds. Um, so if we were to average a normal tax bill, you see your police services, um, your average bill would pay about 2,663,000, uh, $2,663. Your police services are about $610, employee benefits, $626, and you can see some of the various others. Capital projects, about $203, and snow removal, not bad, uh, $53. Hey, this just goes over the tax rate information and how we derive that. Um, you see the total assessed value. It's increased slightly from the final assessed value back in April. Um, we anticipate that number comes down. It usually does a little bit because of, uh, small claims and tax sorceries. I use that number to determine the average assessed value for residents. You see that number's dropped slightly, about 0.59%. Um, then we use the, uh, equalization rate to determine what the average market value is, and that again has dropped slightly. So the average property value, uh, market value is about 890,681 for the town. Um, we come up with the tax rate, it's 1.72%. Again, that applies to the General and Highway Fund, and I just show the tax cap and the growth factor again on this chart. What I'm attempting to show in this chart is, uh, on a property average assessed at 170,000, again, that's about 890, uh, market value. This is showing your overall total tax bill, which would include the school district, the county, and the town. Um, you see the school district is that darker purple, the very large part of the bar. The next, the lighter pink, is Westchester County taxes. The darker pink would be Fire Protection Districts or Fire Districts, and then the green is the Town of Newcastle, and the lighter green are the special districts. So it just gives you an idea of how much your total tax bill would be. I think sometimes a lot of people don't realize when they come into our tax office and pay the tax bill, it's not, it doesn't all go to the town property taxes, um, because we collect the schools and the counties and make them whole as well. Showing an average, uh, tax dollar apportionment, uh, for every hundred dollars. Again, you'll see the school district is about 73% of that. Westchester County and the town are close, about 10%, and then you've got special districts and Fire Protection Districts. Okay, leading to Jeremy's question and, and topic that was brought to our attention very late in the process this year, um, Fire Districts and Fire Protection Districts. So I'll go over, uh, residents of the town receive fire services from one of three sources. Um, you'll either receive them from the Newcastle Fire District or the Millwood Fire District, and both of those have their own budgets. They pass their own budgets, they have their own boards. Those are approved independently. The town collects those taxes, but they're not part of the town budget. Services for the other district, the Northern Fire Protection District, are actually a special district of the town and are included in our taxes. The protection in that district is provided by the town and village of Mount Kisco. So very late in the process, um, we became aware the, there were significant improvements needed in Mount Kisco for their firehouses. Uh, they had three firehouses that needed to be upgraded, and in December of 2018, Mount Kisco borrowed $10 million for that purpose. In 2019, they determined, and probably people followed this, uh, in the news, the examiner, um, that additional funds were needed for the firehouses. So November 5th election this year, they approved an additional $4 million. Newcastle was notified on October 4th, about 4:30, we got a letter via email after the budget was already at the printer, that the town's share of their, the fire protection services were increasing significantly. For 2020, the contractual charges are increasing $331,000. We're actually going to offset that increase by about $75,000. We have a little bit of fund balance, um, so the actual tax levy is going to increase 246,000.
So to be clear, in the numbers you showed previously, that $331,000 is part of that increase?
Yep.
And that's borne upon our taxpayers without the ability to do anything because we don't have a vote?
That's correct.
Because Mount Kisco decided to stick it upon us, among their own residents, um, to deal with this cost.
That's correct. Um, as I mentioned, the 2020, 2021 levy is expected to increase again because they've approved the borrowing of additional $4 million. So, uh, at this time, the town is attempting to negotiate with Mount Kisco, and we're also exploring other options for fire protection.
And October 4th is a Friday, if I'm not mistaken.
It was.
Other options would be, other options would be Millwood Fire District taking over parts that Mount Kisco is servicing now, or Chapaka Fire District taking over parts that also Mount Kisco is servicing now.
Along with other...
Other municipalities are sharing this issue with us and discussing with them about trying to work out how we can work through this to make it more efficient and more economical for, not just our municipality, but theirs.
This would allow us to keep, to keep the money somewhat in the family, so to speak, the Newcastle family. Reduce the tax burden to other Newcastle residents who are already paying it to the Millwood and Chapaka Fire Districts, but it could put an extra burden on the volunteers of those fire districts, of those fire departments.
So I have a chart that shows the average parcel cost for each of the Fire Districts and Fire Protection Districts. You see the, uh, top darker blue line, that's the Millwood Fire District. Uh, the bottom green line is the Newcastle Fire District, and the pink is the Northern Fire Protection District. And you see the chart increase from 2019 to 2020, the average cost per parcel. This just shows our debt service schedule over the next 10 years. Um, if you look at 2019, there's a pretty big drop between 2019, 2020, and you see bigger drops in 2023, and then again in, uh, 2024 and 2025. So we typically time our borrowing every, probably three to five years. We last borrowed in 2018, and we're probably looking to borrow again in 2021 or 2022. This chart I'm showing a, um, historical, going back to 2010, fund balance for the four major funds in the town. Most significant one is the, and I guess it's lighter purple that you see, that was really small back in 2010, and has grown to about 9 million in 2018. That's the General Fund. General Fund fund balance, we were fortunate enough to be able to build that up. We're using significant allocations of that over the next few years to help pay for the downtown project among some other capital projects. Um, you see the blue line is the Water Fund balance. That's also significant. That's about 8 million, and we have quite a few high-dollar projects slated into the Water District. And I've got a projection of, based on allocating fund balances, we've already talked about with existing projects, where will we be, uh, in 2023? And even after allocating for the downtown project and some various other projects, we're still projected to be a little over 6 million. And that's a good number. You don't want to, you don't want your fund balance to decrease really below 15 or 20% of the annual budget, so... That's good. If I have any questions, comments?
Thank you. Life and one, I'm gonna miss these.
Well, you can come and sit here.
Yeah, you can still come. Watch on TV.
Like I've said a number of times, I don't know where I'll be, but I know where I won't be. Okay, so now for the main event. Continuation, public hearing, petition to Senate brief for Chapaka D LLC, the various amendments, so motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The applicant want to say a few words, we jump right into, okay, is the answer. Hello, Mark.
Happy to sit with us.
Usually it's the supervisor, members of the board. Stand at the podium, maybe?
Would you like me to?
Yeah, the way you back is not too...
Fun?
I guess.
Now you stand at the podium.
Neither are we. Might use of being so close to you. I think I'm gonna go back.
I'm loving that today.
Just briefly, we, we appeared, as you recall, in this room in a joint meeting with the Planning Board back on, uh, November 19, and we were asked to submit answers to certain questions, uh, with regard to your comments, the Planning Board comments from that meeting and the meeting that followed that evening, as well as the memo from, uh, the Town Planner that was dated November 13. We made that submission, and the submission briefly summarizing it, we pointed out certain minor, uh, petition modifications which we were seeking. We removed, for example, the, uh, demolition of the guest house as the proposed action, uh, and we made that change. We corrected the typo in the number of workforce and affordable housing units. We also then, uh, submitted to you as part of that, um, 1127 submission, the MFPB PCP revised drawing, which reflects the current level of the plan that we are, have under discussion currently. We gave the, uh, mostly came from the Planning Board, but some questions that came from the Town Board, a construction phasing plan, which specifically focused in on the cut and fill of the various phases of the plan to make sure that it was balanced in each part of the phase. We gave the guest house drawings reflecting the adaptive reuse proposal, which is one of the two, uh, uh, alternatives that we are proposing with respect to the guest house at this point. Uh, there was questions with regard to the public school children that we made the submission. I, it was also an email that I sent directly to make sure that we clarified those numbers. Specifically, those numbers did come from the, uh, school district, and we appreciate the help of getting those numbers. We finally made the visual impact photos and simulations that were requested, which we also submitted as part of that 1127 submission. So that's where we are. We've responded to what we think have been all of the questions today. Clearly, we're here to hear from yourselves and the public tonight, but if you have any questions with respect to our submission or anything else, we're here. The applicant is here as well as the professional.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a sign sheet, if anybody wants to speak. I know Bill has signed up. Vicky, I know you're here on behalf of the school district. Did you want to say anything, or you just...
I'm Warren. We're, we're here to listen.
A warrant here? Oh, yes, there's one.
Something to say in town, you know, boys are here.
Okay. Welcome. Anybody else want to sign? We can just play it as we go, but I'll throw your name on it. Rob, it's first name's Robert.
Yeah, you got it right, Gershaw.
All right. Obviously, anybody else wants to speak, it's, this list is open. But Bill, this is just to keep the order.
So, uh, I can't come in here without, uh, littering the place with papers. So I got some things you can hand out.
Just make sure the town code gets one, so it's part of the record.
Okay, okay, yes.
Okay, I got eight or nine.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm a resident on Bedford Road, and I have bought a neighbor on, um, Cowden Lane, and, uh, I'm very concerned about, uh, the excesses that, uh, will occur upon, um, approval of the proposed amendments to the MFPB, PCP, wherever it is. And I, I think I'd like to, but we've had, we've been through so much in this, we've suffered so much in the way of traffic and disruption, and what I, I feel is that I, we've, I've discussed this last week, I, so I want to come up with some proposals, uh, that are a little more concrete and responsive to the concerns that I have, so that perhaps we can find some solution if one's available. The general concern is that I'd like to call the attention of the board, that they're very much aware of, is that the town code, when adopted in 2014, uh, and when we settled the litigation, we didn't settle it, it just terminated, uh, by, uh, by mutual agreement sort of ad hoc, uh, as far as I understand, uh, is that, uh, the Chapaka Crossing really has to meet traditional, uh, neighborhood standards, and the positioning of the, the requests, uh, that are being asked for here just don't need it, and they're, they're pretty egregious. They're, uh, assertive, they, they're trying to get maximum value without considering the negative impact upon Cowden Lane, Annandale, and, and Bedford Road, and everything else. So my first proposal is that, um, uh, we eliminate or relocate four units that are being proposed as Building U. Building U is on the, the northeast corner of, of the, the lot, which divuts, uh, the Leach House and is across the street from the Brennan House, and, um, is very visible. And what, what the, the map does is, if you look at it, is that it portrays the whole street of, of houses that face onto, to Cowden. Cowden being invaded by this visual, uh, aesthetic impairment. So I think that what, the better solution, I mean, first solution is I'd get rid of that Unit U, but I understand that that's not legally permitted because, uh, I understand, if I'm not mistaken, I'd like to make sure that the council reduces, that there are 91 units and, and this, you need to have that Building U to make the 91, which has already been approved. So if it's already approved, then I don't, I can't say get rid of it. I can say find it, find another place for another home for it. And in, uh, the presentation I've submitted to the board tonight, I'm basically, I'm suggesting three alternatives. First alternative is you take each, you take one of the units and, and sprinkle them around the, the whole place, and there are other places, there are other, uh, buildings which have three units, so you make that into four, two units, make that into three, and so, uh, that's, those are top ones. Another alternative is to, to create a new building between two units, which are J and N, which are closer towards the, the town. Another alternative is to, to create a new building between two units, which are J and N, which are closer towards the town, closer towards the amenity center and therefore allows closer walk and less foot traffic and closer distance to visit the shops. And it, it puts perhaps people who are less able to be, or less mobile, closer to what they want to have, which is the lifestyle that is being promoted in this, this luxury suite. So that's, and the third alternative is to take, go to the, if you go to the map, on the northwest, on the northern side, there is a road H. Now, road H is, it's got three buildings, four buildings, and that butts up to the back of the Leach property. And what you could do is you could move the angle of the road H away from Cowden Road, so the northernmost tip of that, that road is, has a greater distance from Cowden, without changing the position of where it starts. So all of these are reasonable accommodations to, to, to give some breathing space to the oppressed and positions of the Cowden Lane owners. So that's, that's the first thing about relocation or elimination. The second thing is that I believe that, I looked at the town code and said, well, what is it about this, this East Village that should not be joining some of the normal privileges of, of ownership in this community? East Village has got tremendous, when I came to Chapagola, I came here because I wanted some, some space. And I came here from a place which, where I had less space and now I have birds and I'm very happy. But when we don't have that space, we need to consider whether there's a way to restrict the uses, so we're not promoting abuse of that space and abuse of the high density. This is ultra-high density. So for, for that, for the reasons of ultra-high density, I think there should be some exchange, concession by the developer, where there's no authorization for any off-street parking that is for, under, under zone code that permits occupants of premises to, to lease the parking space to a person who's not resident on the premises. So it's like, you know, you're not gonna lease it to some kid who's in a high-rise and needs to get the car once a month. So that's one thing. So there's no, no renting of off-street parking. Second thing is that additional thing like the, the shorter driveways. Shorter driveways is really amazing, amazing galling attempt to over- intensify an already highly dense position. They're asking for fifteen-foot driveways. In the parking lot at Newcastle Town Hall, I can guarantee you that, that at least half, or if not more, of the cars will exceed fifteen feet, that's a hundred and eighty inches. And you go online and look at the new cars coming out, they're a hundred and ninety, a hundred and, a hundred and ninety-two. So, so what's the point? This is, this is, this is gonna create an overhang onto the sidewalk. It's gonna be impediment to free traffic on the sidewalks, pedestrian traffic. And so it's, it's gotta be, to me, it's illogical, illegal, because it doesn't meet the, the standard of traditional neighborhood design. Where's the traditional neighborhood, which has this density and then all this short driveway? Doesn't happen. So it's violation of the existing code. And therefore, I, I recommend that you deny that aspect of the request. Further, because of additional traffic and congestion, I'm requesting no additional basements. We've got already sixty, you don't need another nine. That's just another traffic, more traffic congestion. And we've experienced so much traffic congestion that that's, that's gonna be a further devaluation of our, our homes. And it's gonna be tax or sharraray. You're gonna have reductions in assessments. It's not gonna be a net benefit. You're mistaken if you think it's a good idea on tax assessments. Additional point, no rental of rooms to roomers or boarders. The existing code has a provision that says that renting of not more than one bedroom and owner occupied one family principal dwelling to not more than one non-transient roomer is, or boarder is permitted. Okay, well, we're not looking to create more traffic, more cars by renting out to boarders. And because, given the extremely high density, there's no reason to permit a use other than for the resident occupant. So, and finally, there was a discussion, I think, last week about no bedrooms in the basements. And I'd like to go on record to remind you that that should be part of the resolutions as a condition of approval. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, not everybody needs to come up to this podium, it just.
You wanna ask me, next?
Yeah, you're next, yeah.
I know, I wanna come up. I'm dressed for it too, so you can see that. Thank you, appreciate it.
This may be a permanent addition to this room.
So good to see everybody. Thank you. I think it's been about maybe a year, almost, I can't remember. Don, you remember the last time I was here, that big meeting, almost maybe a year ago? And I sat through the plans before, I think we had the Whole Foods open because of concerns about this street. So one, I wanna say thank you to the town and the folks, the police department, everybody in terms of getting the safety issues addressed and everything else in the way to get that, that completed. I do feel that it's important to note that it did take several months, way beyond the optimistic or even pessimistic assumptions that Summit Greenfield or Chapagola Crossing assumed it was gonna get done, for whatever reasons. It's unfortunate because it did cause a lot of angst for many of us who live literally within a block of that. But that's water out of the bridge. I haven't been to the other meetings, I know there are some of these, I was fortunate, whoever the legal firm that gave the notice out a couple of days ago, thank you very much, because it allowed me to figure out I'm gonna come to this, because I had no idea. There were not many previous notices sent in the mail. I think I had to put a stamp in the receipt envelope in order to get notices, which I think is ridiculous. I didn't do that, so I had no idea what the prior meetings have been about. But I hear that there's been a fair amount of variances that have been asked for from the town regarding changes that Summit Greenfield, Chapagola Crossing is, is asking for, many of which, Bill, thank you for bringing up. I had no idea, half of these things that you were mentioning, that you are proposing. I do have concerns as a resident, literally on Cowden Lane, facing chapagola crossings and the planned condominiums or buildings that are gonna be put up there. I remember about a year ago that there was discussions in terms of expanding, excuse me, adding more roadway further towards, I think, the Leich's property, talking about a berm and, you know, having that built up. Variances for all these things, having discussions around can fire trucks turn around on the road? The road should be widened. Parking, should we be adding more three bedrooms versus two-bedroom condominiums versus one-bedroom condominiums? And all these variances. And I'm assuming the planning board has granted some of these and some of them, maybe that's what the discussion's about tonight. But I am very concerned for many reasons, that many, a few that Bill mentioned. I don't know where building, it sounds like I understand where building U is, I didn't know what building U was. Sounds like it's gonna be close to your property, Don, Leich's property and the family. I don't know if that's new or what it is. I don't think it's expanded in terms of what it was supposed to be originally, two bedrooms to three bedrooms, with or without basements, driveway widths. But it is encroaching on the, on the Cowden Lane beauty that we have. It's a private street with a few homes, and I would hope we would be able to protect that. I'm very concerned about what the view will be up on the hill there, after the berm is put in, the buildings, how tall they are, how much lighting is gonna be, parking on the street or not. It will definitely impact us on Cowden Lane and other houses around. Maybe the folks in the room who don't live nearby could care less about it, but I do. And I will guarantee you, if I feel like the valuation of my home is being decreased, I'm coming back for tax surgery, asking for a lower assessment, because it doesn't make any sense. I don't wanna lose the value of the home that's already lost to date. Some of them may be because of Chapagola Crossing, I can't prove it, but it's just the nature of what's going on out there in the marketplace. But I am concerned about it. The alternatives, I don't know the value of the alternatives, whether one's better than the other. Bill, appreciate you bringing that up. Maybe these are good alternatives to, for consideration versus what's been asked for, for the town board and planning board to consider and approve. I'm worried about things like renting of the street parking, additional basements, renting to boarders, everything you brought up, Bill. But we could say, we have all the laws in the books that say, don't do this, don't do this, don't do this, don't do this. Doesn't mean people aren't gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna try to squeeze in as much as they can, have another family member come live in the basement. How are you gonna moderate that? How are you gonna know if that's really happening or not? Having an extra car put in there. I'm very worried about the traffic, not that we have now, actually, the traffic now is actually not too bad. Some cases it can get pretty, you know, loaded up, but I'm worried about when all those buildings come up in terms of condominiums, whether it's ninety-one units or ninety-five, I don't know exactly what it is. That's gonna cause a lot more traffic. And if these are not put into whatever the approval is for the questions that came up around street parking, basements, et cetera, then I'm really worried that if there's supposed to be X number of living spaces, assumptions with three or four people in the homes, ends up being five, six, because people violating the rules or the rules don't even get passed, then we got only the additional traffic and everything else. But we then put additional pressure potentially on the school. The school, there are some assumptions in here, I'm assuming, that says X number of kids will be in these units that are going to attend the schools. And if that gets changed by adding a basement that's livable, by adding a bedroom on five or six units, that's X more children that could potentially go to the school system, which puts more pressure on the school system's budget because it's built on per pupil costs and other things like that. That's just gonna hit all of us. So I do ask and appeal to, because I'm making the decision here, to consider some of these things and sort of say, wait a minute. We've had many years of discussion and proposals from the chapagola crossing folks was approved and it's constantly coming back, constant coming back for variances. One, two, three, five, ten, I don't know how many there are, constant changes, and enough's enough. I mean, they come crying and say, we can't make, make what we wanna make out of this thing, it's not working for us. When do we say enough's enough in that this whole thing, which was originally designed, is becoming something totally different in terms of the impact to the community? So I do, I'd like to act, you know, requesting to act and caution, consider all these things and hopefully make the appropriate decision on behalf of your neighbors in the town to keep the town where it should be, the way it was originally planned many years ago. So that's all I have to say. Sorry for the long-winded point of view, but I wanted to share that.
Just, just a tiniest bit of background also, like, I know that this is, this is before us now to change some of the boundaries, light modifications and add nine bedrooms. But these issues have been talked about over the last two years with the planning board. I don't know how many of you have been attending the planning board meetings, but none of these issues are actually new issues. They've been talked about the planning board over the last two years, basements, length of driveways, parking requirements, all that stuff. There is one change, the two major changes, and we've been deferring to the planning board. We've had two joint meetings with the planning board because after all, they've been working on this with the applicant for two years, tweaking the plans. And now here, here we are, you know, at the goal line because we have to tweak our prior approvals to be consistent with everything that they've been working on for two years. There are a couple of things that have changed that, you know, are, are big changes for us as well. For instance, over the past two years, we've asked for additional land around the Performing Arts Center, which was basically given to us for one dollar. As a result of giving us additional land around the Performing Arts Center, that meant certain buildings needed to be moved. And that resulted in those buildings, which are referred to as the U buildings. So we're not saying we, we love the location of those buildings either. But I just wanna make it clear that this is not as if like it just come to us and say, hey, you know, we want you guys to do this and you gotta bend over for us. It's not, it hasn't been like that. It's been a give and take. They gave us more land around the auditorium, those buildings needed to be moved. This is a location that was proposed. We're not saying we love it, but that's what we're doing back and forth. The planning board's been working on the park and the planning board's been working on the length of the driveways. The planning board's been working on this, the width of the roads with the fire department. These are issues that have been discussed over the last two years. Basements have been on the table for the last two years. Basements have always been silent. It didn't say no basements, it didn't say basements, it was silent. For the last two years, they've been talking about basements. And we can restrict them, with these restrictions and with the homeowners association. So we do feel, and by the way, Toll Brothers is here and they know their projections about who's gonna, they know who they're marketing to. And listen, we're not, you know, idiots, we don't just listen to what they say, but at the same time, they wanna sell a product and they're gonna sell the product based on what they, their market demands are. And, you know, their, their experience happens to be that basements are, are important for storage for empty nesters. I mean, listen, if we want empty nesters, right? Even though the school's gonna wind up getting two million dollars and four hundred thousand for the town from these ninety-one townhomes, which are being taxed as fee simple, just like their homes are. The fact is, we don't love empty nesters in there, least, least total on the school. And empty nesters look for basements for storage, they look for basements for recreation purposes, and Toll can talk, speak to that. But I just don't want you to think that these are all like things that are being thrown at us at the eleventh hour. These are things that have been talked about over the last two years. But we are definitely concerned about the locations we're at.
I don't, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I don't, but I'm not saying that. If I came across that, that's not really what I'm saying. I've been to several of the meetings in the past, these have all come up. My only concern is, and I believe some of the past things have come up, there's been variances granted, right? Now, there has been from the original plans, sort of things have changed.
Like the Whole Foods, I mean, that was, if that's not a variant you're talking about, like when they opened Whole Foods before they finished their road improvements, that was something we worked with them to make that happen.
Yeah, no, I understand that, that's fine. But I, it seems like the creep factor, you know, you start with nine, X number of units, we get Y number of units, X number of bedrooms, Y number of bedrooms, basements, no basements, and two years, I mean, again, discussions for two years, but I always thought that we had, there was a lot of feedback in these prior meetings from folks like myself and others who feel like there will be an impact on those changes. It sounds like there's still discussion around it, which is amazing to me. I, I would've thought like, okay, you've got all the input, let's get this thing done. But it just keeps on going and going and going without an answer. So I don't know if this is supposed to be a final decision today or tomorrow, or what, what is happening here? I, I have not been in all these meetings, so I don't know where we, you know, what, what the decision plan is, the roadmap is for this. So I'm only coming here tonight to get a better understanding and to voice my, you know, my thoughts and opinions based on what Bill has said here and others, I guess it's Bill, right? Yeah. So that's the only reason I'm here and that's why I said, so you're right, I may have missed, spoken a little bit where I said, you know, you haven't, we haven't done anything about it. I understand there's been discussion, so, right, you know, it's fair to say.
We're, we're not, you know, so I think a lot of us are, you know, not thrilled with the location of the U building. Another big issue that we personally have been dealing with, when I say we, the town board, has been the guest house. I don't think Ray Williams is here tonight, but, you know, that's been a, a big issue as far as what we do at the guest house. And, you know, they're, you know, they could have demolished it or they could have preserved the outside. I'd like to do the Copla building.
Can I just, can I just give a brief overview of where we are in this process? What this meeting is about to make and we're looking to respond to your question?
This is a public hearing, and you could think of a public hearing as a fact-finding process. Summit Greenfield submitted a petition asking for some of the changes that we've been talking about. But for the last two years, they've also been before the planning board trying to iron out a lot of the details. We talked about driveway length and, and things of that nature, you know, more on a granular basis in terms of how the development is actually going to look. At all times, when the town board has reviewed this with respect to the zoning and what we call the MFPD, that's more of a big picture, big, more layout, big picture issues. So these things, the, the planning board's been working on, on, on these more granular issues for two years. That process is nearing an end. Some changes have come out of that process and there are some other changes that now require the town board to review and sign off on, and that's why, that's what we're doing here tonight. So, public hearing, the, the purpose is to get information from the applicant, which we have, to get information from the town's professional consultants, which we have staff, and importantly, to get feedback from the public, which we're, which we're getting, which I know the town board values because you live there. And to, to weigh all those things and then make decisions about whether to, to grant what the applicant's asking for, maybe grant it with conditions. So, and just a little bit of perspective, because I, I heard some comments about traffic and other issues and density and those are things that prior town boards looked at in two thousand and twelve, twelve, thirteen and fourteen. So a lot of these issues have been on the table for a very long time. I heard mention about litigation. There, there actually were settlements to those litigations, they didn't just end. They were very elaborate settlement agreements that had, suffice it to say, there's been a lot of water over the dam on, on this application. A, a lot of things have been studied. And what we're, where we're at right now, by virtue of the And what we're, where we're at right now, um by virtue of the planning board's work, is we're really at, at the five-yard line and, and working on details now. Now, the big picture has been established, the big issues have been studied, those decisions have been made. Really looking at fine-tuning what, what the final product is gonna look like.
Is, is, I, is the settlement public doc, document? Is it something that's accessible? Because uh I, I requested when I haven't seen it.
There are two settlement agreements, they're both public documents. We can get them to you, please.
By the way, thank you for explaining that. From another self, I'll be one small comment, I'm done. Selfishly, I know that was a promise, I thought was part of the agreement, that um when the traffic thing was all built and everything and the Whole Foods opened up and like that, that there would be a pathway, was promised and I thought was agreed to, between the Chapel Crossing's entrance of one seventeen and Cowden Lane. Walkway, a walkway, it doesn't exist, it doesn't exist.
Well, there is.
It does not, it's, it's just a piece of, it's grass, it's grass, it's chewed up, it's, it's not marked, it's not safe. I don't find that satisfactory versus what I see, it's a viable path from the corner where the street light is all to Corus Greeley up to the entryway of Chapel Crossing, that's a path. We don't have a path. And, and whether, you know, I know it was promised, I thought be, for some folks would like to walk there and, and feel safe doing that. You can't do that now because you're literally right on the curb when it comes to traffic coming down and there, it, it's not, that, that has not been delivered. So it's a selfish ask and I personally know if that's gonna happen or not, and then I'm done, so.
Well, they did, they did develop the path and they, we did make changes to it. This is the first I'm actually hearing anything negative about it, to be honest.
It's not, it's just, it's a grass block, it's a kind of a grass down the
Well, it's, it's, it was never gonna be paved, it has to be impervious over there, but again, this is the first, I, we, we heard, I had one complaint from, you know, the neighborhood lives around the corner there. It was addressed early on and I haven't heard anything negative since, so we'll get back to that.
I suggest for folks in this room, maybe take a look at that and walk down it during traffic time and see if you feel comfortable walking down that path.
The grass path is the only thing that the New York State DOT approved.
Sorry?
So it's the only thing that the New York State DOT would approve, that's DOT property, it's not our property.
Maybe.
But even if it's a crushed gravel path, it can be maintained, it can be, you know, you shouldn't have to bushwhack.
Right.
So that, that, that came up back in, I guess, November of last year.
Yeah.
And what was decided was to put a grass path on, that was all with the town board and that's what the DOT would accept. If there's something different now?
I think it's
I thought it was
because of the rain.
I thought it was crushed.
Your feet will crush down
Now, this crushed stone running past the Route one seventeen entrance to Chapel Crossing, up and around down Roaring Brook Road.
Yeah.
From Cowden Lane to uh the entrance of Chapel Crossing is the grass path.
And try walking on that now after this snowstorm or during a heavy rainstorm and see what it feels like when you get your card, you're trying to graff groceries and you're sinking about, uh, you know, six inches into the mud. So I understand that, that's what Dot says, but it wasn't what we expected.
Well, Dave, could they use crushed stone over there?
It's a DOT question, Rob, I, I, I don't know. I, I know that that was not allowed a year ago, but we can certainly ask again.
Well, if it, if we bring it to them and show them that it's dangerous, you know.
Although it's just an impervious surface.
I mean, some of these things, listen, we, you know, if anybody's here from Annandale, you know, we're still weren't trying to get them to agree to the, uh, don't block the box marks on one seventeen. We'll be able to do that during the construction because that was actually in part of sort of our control with the construction plan. But now it's their decision and we can't get them to sign off on it. Um
No, it's not us, we're not the, their DOT.
No, I mean DOT, that's what I do, but I mean, so the DOT is a pain. I mean, at one point, they wanted a roundabout, we did a roundabout and then uh DEP says no roundabout, you know, it's, it's just crazy with these agencies sometimes.
On the other side, on the Cowden Lane trail, at some point, that trail leaves the DOT right away, right? And then is on private property that you could, where you could improve it?
I believe so, closer to our property.
Right.
It's, it's not, I don't think it's a very long stretch and I don't have the plan in front of me.
But adding rocks is not expensive, for these case.
Could I ask a, a small detail question, Rob? And thanks to you guys for the, the photos last week, appreciate that. So, U building, you said it yourself, U building, we don't love it, you know, it's, it's in my backyard. I don't love it either. The photos, Dave, that we saw, as I said to you earlier, I can live with it, I don't love it. If there's any, if there's any, I'm sorry.
The E M.
No, the, no, the U building. The U building.
Yeah, I thought it was the EE that was gonna be, I, I thought that was gonna be the issue for you.
No, no, EE. EE is behind, so, but, but you're, we're kinda going in the same direction.
Yeah.
The, the question I have is, and again, I stress, we can live with it. I don't love it, but we can live with it. The question I had though is, is that, is there any way we can take one or two of those units, kind of similar to what Bill was referencing? Is there any way we can take one or two of those units in, in building U and maybe put them alongside, adjacent to building E, which is in the back, on the north side? Um, that way that U building, which again, sits on the ridge and I, and I, I know you guys, the proposal, the suggestion you'd made about, about plantings and all, it's gonna help, it'll be, it'll definitely help. But is there any way to take one or two of those units in building U and put it in the back by E, to the northern section?
Andy.
Yeah.
No, I mean, okay. Can I sort of explain, like, so, um, myself and my wife Kelly, we live in a twenty-eight pound length, which is directly opposite building U. Um, we, in this August, we will have been three years, we actually built approximately, we've been, we've built an existing house that was there. Um, at that time, we obviously looked at the plans that were available and building U wasn't there.
Right.
Right, and this is directly in front of us, so I completely agree.
I'm sorry, are we talking about E or EE? E is the one that's over by the auditorium.
I'm sorry, maybe I just take the quick
Show us that on the screen. Congratulations, URL for the screen.
So, uh, double E, so here's, here's U, double E is over there, sorry, you're exactly right.
Double E. You'd actually like to see double E expanded? Cause I, when I looked at the pictures from your house, I thought EE was the one that was more intrusive than U.
The problem is that, that the fact is, is that over here on these buildings in the back,
Yeah.
it's, it's very level property.
Uh huh.
So we can put as many trees as we possibly can and it'll, it'll get covered, right?
For double E's.
Yeah.
For double E.
Okay.
The problem with building U is it's on the ridge, it's on the ridge.
Perched up.
And, and so it kinda looks down, we're kind of in a bowl. So it looks down into my entire backyard.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, again, the photos were great, Dave did a great job on superimposing U on. And again, as, as I said, we can live with it, but it would almost be ideal for one or more of these units to be popped back there in some way or somewhere else, just to make this unit slightly bigger, slightly smaller.
Yeah. Well, and I, I did, I did like Mr. Bear's suggestion with regard to changing the angle of Road H to see if there's a way that we could angle that away from the houses on Cowden Lane.
Right, and that would certainly, that would certainly benefit the entire
I wonder if that's something that was considered or or could be, or have.
But again, I just wanna emphasize one quick point. The reason these units would change is because the town asked for more space around the Performing Arts Center and it was given to us and then they had to find a spot for these other units. Again, they've been working with, I'm not, I'm not trying to defend them, actually what my point is more so that they've actually been working with us literally for six years, okay, and we're gonna continue to work with them. We don't treat them like, you know, you can treat them any way you want, but we, we try not to treat them like the enemy, we try to treat them like partners to come up with solutions. So the fact is, this is, this is good and, you know, these are suggestions that hopefully they can work with.
Just in, I added, the, Mark one, the, the terms for the applicant. In adding to what Council said and to what Supervisor said, there's really two main things that drove the changes and just so, for example, you understand, it has been a couple of years, so building U, for example, moved ten feet.
Ten feet, right.
Total, so that, I mean, that building's been there for two years, it's been sitting there, but we wound up moving it ten feet. What drove the changes was, as the Supervisor mentioned, one thing was the town made certain requests which had to do with, for example, the Performing Arts Center as the boundary grew by over an acre. And so then, so, so certain buildings had to shift, but also, so you understand, cause this is a little bit different than it usually happens. There are also, when you did the PDCP, that's a general concept plan, these things weren't engineered. So it's like when you work on zoning, you do a concept plan. You then have to go out and engineer and do things and as we were doing that and working with the planning board, certain engineering issues came up that created things. So, for example, we came in with one plan and they said, yeah, that works, except we don't like how high the berm is over here because that's gonna have an effect on the neighbors that are over there. Can we shift the building here and maybe lower the berm? Can we move the roadways? These are the kinds of things we work with the planning board. After two years and we worked out a plan which we thought was generally a consensus, we then have to match up the town board documents, which is that PDCP, for example, and come back to them and say, okay, you have to now approve a plan that's gonna reflect all this work we've done at the planning board. So it's kind of a back and forth, you have to satisfy them, come back here and then go back. The reason I'm bringing this up now is so that you also understand that even when this gets finished, we're still not done, sorry Felix. Because we still have to go back to the planning board for site plan approval. So, a lot of the detail like landscaping plans, when we talk about how we're gonna screen the buildings and things that you, when you go to a planning board, I mean, you go through, we haven't finished yet. So, this is kind of, again, I just wanna, you know, understand the process. This is that big picture. I'm not suggesting that you're not making decisions that, that big picture is happening.
Yeah.
But we need to get to that point so we can then go back to the planning board and say, the town board has said, this is what it's gonna look like in general. Now you can finalize the site plan, which is gonna get into all the details of this issue. So, I just, I'm, just want everybody to understand what the process is.
Right, that's great. All that being said, I think that the concerns of the neighbors, if we were able to address them by perhaps taking a unit off of U, adding it on to EE and then changing the angle of Road H so that it's further away from Cowden Lane and closer to the Loop Road. That would seem, you know, to my completely untrained eye, that would seem like a very reasonable compromise.
We can look, we can look at it.
Okay, that'd be great. If you're looking, two units moved from U to the end of EE would even be better.
We'll see if, we'll see if we have the
While you're sketching.
Whatever, whatever. Just get, remember, we were here last week, we raised these two units wuffy and we're asking to move them up.
No, 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 I, I do remember. No, no.
But, but when you were here last week, you hadn't yet given us the photorealistic view from the leech's property, like, like. I think, I'm sorry, property.
So we'll, we'll, we'll deal with those things. The driveway issues, the planning board's been working on, they continue to work on it. The length of the roads, the planning board deals with those issues, you know. Another, what I was mentioning before, it's not, I don't think anybody's even hear about it, but I know, Bill, you mentioned it last week, that the guest house at the front, when you first drive in, I mean, under the prior approvals, they could have torn that down or they could adaptively reuse it. And one of the big decisions that we're making is, is basically making them adaptively reuse it. Which, which is basically gonna, maybe to the dismay of Ray Williams, it's gonna, you know, they're gonna need to cut the inside and uh, you know, use it as part of their clubhouse. But the outside's gonna remain as is. It's something that people have looked at for the last fifty years or a hundred years, whatever it is. And uh, they're gonna continue to look at it, just like with the Kubla Building. Which is exactly, you know, again, exactly what they did. And Toll Brothers is here too. I mean, some of you guys may know this from uh Exton Warren, sorry. Get everybody represented. So uh and we have Christine from the school here, welcome Christine. We already mentioned Warren and
Christine, I, I have a question for you. You, I had gotten information from you before and I just, some of this is, is already shipped, it's sailed, but you're expected a certain amount of monies for the school district with the, obviously with the development. Um, one of my concerns was the number of students already in Grafflin, um, which this is going to add to, and again, a lot of this may have sailed already, but when we're discussing converting two to three bedrooms and we're discussing basements, uh, you know, anyone who uh, and I assume everyone here was a kid at some point, might have wanted to live in the basement as they got older and they had younger siblings. Um, you could have an office in the basement uh where people could come, that wouldn't affect the school, affect the school, but the numbers that I had seen, that you had sent me before, was that Grafflin already is the biggest school district, I say school district, pardon me, elementary school with four hundred seventy-nine kids, if I'm not mistaken, and I don't know if this is still accurate, four oh six for Roaring Brook and, and four twenty-three for West Orchard. Um, and then based on what we just received, um, from Summit today, or, pardon me, apologies, not today. Um, more recently, was an expected forty-three units, forty-three more students in the East Village and there's already seventeen in the, in the, the Kubla Building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if that generates roughly two million dollars, first question, how much does each student cost to educate in the system in Chapel School District?
Depends on the student and their needs. Right now, our projected enrollment expense per student is thirty-two thousand dollars, but that's not accurate. Some students are a million dollars and other students are thirty-two thousand dollars, depending on what their services are.
So it
Um, I, maybe I could just answer like this, as long as the fee simple tax structure um remains the same. In terms of enrollment, I don't really believe that should have any bearing on any decision that you make. Whoever moves into this development, regardless of the number of children that are there, the district will support and will make adjustments as necessary to support the amount of children that live in that space.
I, I think that's, I think that's fair, but when we talk about the, the dollars that are coming in, if it's, even if it's average twenty-five to thirty thousand per student and based on these numbers, forty-three and seventeen is sixty, that also doesn't include, unless the developer tells me otherwise, we're assuming that this is gonna be empty nesters for the most part, who are gonna live, leave potentially homes in Newcastle or Chapel Quail or more specifically the Grafflin District. You're gonna have more kids than what you have on here and then if we increase the size of the bedrooms, or pardon me, and size of the basement or allow basement, you're gonna have even more kids, so it becomes a, you know, we talk about the dollars, it becomes sort of a financial wash at best. And then you're, you're adding students in, but if it's, if you're talking thirty
And I have to tell you, it's impossible to make projection like you're asking because every student has different needs. Um, particularly our kids that have special needs. Um, so to say, you can't really equate this number of students to this dollar amount because you don't, you can't anticipate who's moving into the
So you couldn't say seventy students times twenty-five or thirty thousand to average that?
Again, I, I'm gonna add to that, so even if you have two children, let's say, without special needs, just general ed, one of them could slip into an existing class and the existing program. And the second one could tip the scales where now the class size ratios demand that you add a section. So that's another teacher. That's another hundred plus thousand dollar salary benefits, pension, et cetera. Um, so that's what you have to look at. The idea of allocating monies equally to each child, it's just a false paradigm. We, we can't possibly look at it that way.
So you don't gotta look at it that way, the Grafflin School has multiple five teacher or five-section classrooms, classes. I think there's two now whereas
That changes every year.
Right, you know, Jeremy, every, the, the, when we look at allocations or projections for the district,
One buck has none.
If you look at what John does in our, in our budget presentation, the hardest thing we have to do is look at what our incoming kindergarten class is. You can project first grade through twelfth grade very easily, people moving out, people moving in, that's pretty accurate. But the amount of kids coming to kindergarten, that's always inaccurate. If you look at it a couple of years ago, you know, Grafflin had larger sections. Next year, West Orchard had larger sections and Roaring Brook had larger sections. So this year, Grafflin might have the largest population. That could change next year to West Orchard or Roaring Brook. Our, our district's very dynamic, you know, and as, I don't, I won't speak for the board, because I'm not the president of the board, but I will speak as a board member. Our goal as a board of education is to ensure that all children of the district are educated the best way we can. So if they're living on the Grafflin side, living on the West Orchard side or in the middle, at Roaring Brook, we will make sure that those children are educated.
But so, you know, when, and my understanding is that when the uh concept plans were, were initially designed, that one of the driving factors in terms of determining the number of three-bedroom versus two-bedroom condos that were going to be built here was the capacity of the school district and was the responses that we received from the school district wanting to ensure that, that these were primarily marketed towards and desirable for empty nesters as opposed to families with school-aged children. So what I'm hearing you say now is actually, in my mind, a little bit of a departure from what I think is the historical perspective.
A departure, I think what Christine said, I think what Christine said is totally right. As long as these remain fee simple, that's what we're, we're looking at. Initially, they wanted to be condos, not fee simple.
Mm-hmm.
Then when you have a large number of children, that's when it affects the school issue a lot.
Mm-hmm. So in your mind then, there isn't a number of incoming children that would cause alarm for the schools? So, you know, if, if, if the, if the math were to be wrong and we ended up with way more school-aged children than what we've been predicting, there isn't a level here when you talk about ninety-one townhomes that would, would, would cause concern for you all to be able to
My question is, you're saying you wanna add basements to nine townhomes?
No, no, no.
No, no, no. The basements would be for all ninety-one.
All, all the town. Right, and then just.
Nine is additional bedrooms on top of what was initially proposed. So nine is shifting from nine that would have been two bedrooms and making them three bedrooms.
And, and I think what's absent from this, unless I'm wrong, is that it, you're looking at numbers solely for the development, but you're not looking at numbers for what we believe to be, or what we're being told, or empty nesters leaving Newcastle, other homes for example. And then a home as opposed to maybe a townhouse that's three or four bedrooms is not going to be point six seven kids per two, two bedrooms, or point six seven, pardon me, point three seven students per two bedrooms and point six seven for three bedrooms. If you have a three or four bedroom home, that now is vacated, one would assume you're gonna get at least one or two kids. So ten Newcastle residents go, that's, you know, arguably twenty new students.
I just wanna mention that, in fairness, I, I understand what you're saying and these are all projections impossible, but if you look at the numbers, which is all that we can do and the comparable numbers, and you asked us to look at three different townhome developments, we did. And we even looked at our own, which is affordable workforce housing, which has a significantly more, you know, higher ratio of students than those as opposed to luxury, luxury townhomes being marketed to, to empty nesters. That forty-three number that you're using is way above, way above what we believe is ever gonna procure out of those ninety-one. In fact, it, it's almost impossible that it's gonna get to that number. That forty, it was originally forty, then with the nine extra bedrooms, the nine extra bedrooms, we're saying, okay, three more students. And when we say we, we think it's gonna be way less. These are the numbers that as lead agency, when the findings were looked at some years ago, that you said in a conservative fashion as lead agency, this is what we are going to say is gonna happen here. Understand that we believe and the numbers support us when you keep looking since the findings have been done, that there's gonna be way less than that. So I understand what they're saying as to whether the school district can hail or not. We're not here to comment on any of that. But the fact of the matter is, we think there's gonna be way less than that forty or forty-three.
Forty-five, forty-five kids times thirty-two thousand average per kid, assuming there's no special needs kids, no other cause, no increase in, in, um, number of classrooms, it just assumes a basic thirty-two thousand on average. That's a million, almost a million five hundred thousand, and you're saying there's two million coming in on revenue. But that million five's gonna go up every year because the cost of education.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question with thirty-two? Does that include, is that?
I, I include that number.
Is that all school district money, the thirty-two, or is there's, part of that that's state funded?
We're primarily funded by taxpayers. We're very low contribution by state.
Right, but kind of that thirty-two per student, there is a state portion of that that deflects off of that thirty-two, correct?
Seven percent. Seven percent.
Yeah, I mean.
That's it? That is much higher.
I've talked to most other places.
I was just, I was just talking to them today, so we'll talk to them.
I just, you know, the district's not gonna opine on whether or not we'll be able to, on enrollment predictions. What I'm telling you is, based on whatever decisions made, we will educate whoever moves into that property.
Of course.
We have to make adjustments based on our zoning to support the students that move into that facility. We will absolutely do that. Um, there's a lot of hypotheticals at play here, but I don't want the district to be the justification for any decision that's made regarding this property.
And let me, let me just add two things.
I, I don't think, I don't think this, this school would be the justification, nor do I expect it to, to tell us what's gonna happen in the future. The, the reality of it is, having kids have gone through the Grafflin School, knowing that there's issues with five, five section classes, knowing that it's a bigger district, I'll use that term even though it's not appropriate, uh, knowing that there's going to be potentially empty nesters moving out, whether it ultimately comes out to twenty-five thousand per taxpayer, thirty-two thousand per tax, or whatever the number is, I think we're, to say that this is going to be such a big boon, it's not really going to be something that significant when you take away the, the cost to educate these children, if anything, um, in terms of infrastructure and just your, your costs. I realize the school wants the extra revenues, make no mistake, we all want the extra dollars, it is what it is. Uh, assuming that it comes through, my concern again is that we're getting inaccurate numbers, so that we're not stuck down the road. You'll educate them, I have no doubt about that. I have no doubt about that.
Yeah, I also, I'd like to share that while I understand your position, we do a very good job of balancing out our classes, so we don't have, um, one school with class sizes that are larger than others. I mean, we have, we have limits in terms of, um, contractual limits around, around how many students are in a class, and we always make sure that that's balanced, regardless of what elementary school the students are attending. Um, so I don't want there to be a misrepresentation that there's this huge imbalance in Grafflin compared to the other two elementary schools, because that's just simply not true.
Hey, also.
If that, if that were to happen, we would be district, which has been done before.
I just wanna say one thing. Also, again, the, the ninety-one townhomes has, has been approved.
Right.
So really what's on the table, and, and we did change, change it so they're all fee simple, which before I was elected, it was very clear to me that was very important to school board, in fact, that's why I got involved in politics. If wasn't for those three hundred forty-nine condos coming to Chappaqua Crossing, I wouldn't be sitting here right now today. Um, I know I'd be here for two more weeks. But putting that aside, fee simple, two very important words when you deal with school kids. And they're all gonna be fee simple, ninety-one townhomes already approved. So what we're talking about here is nine additional bedrooms, and yes, basements. It wasn't site, it was silent about whether it was basements or not. And for two years, they'd been dealing with the planning board with the assumption it's gonna be basements. And they're gonna, they've already agreed to deed restrict them, so you can't have any bedrooms down there. And it'll also be part of the homeowners' bylaws. And if anybody, and we've had discussions at prior meetings, if anybody's ever lived in an association with a homeowners' association, they're pretty strict about their rules. And if you're violating the rules, they're usually right on top of you in seconds. You know, so we feel comfortable with the bedrooms. And Toll Brothers is here and they can talk about, I don't know, is that James is showing, I don't know.
James.
James, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Sova, just one more information that I was reminded of, and also on note, we're here talking about the ninety-one townhomes, but please also understand that when the taxes were studied, it was studied Chappaqua Crossing as a whole. There is four million dollars roughly, four or five, that comes out of the commercial part of this that was put into account when it was determining what the economics were as to how many school children could not only go into the ninety-one townhomes, but also into the two-hundred Kubla Building. So this is not two million dollars of generated money for the schools, I think it's either six or seven, I don't have it exactly in front of me. But there's a lot more revenue here that's being produced than we're discussing tonight, because this is the last piece, but this was all done together.
And the school children and the Kubla Building.
Why is Toll Brothers be, I just don't understand this. Ninety-one condominiums or homes are being approved.
Okay.
Fine, we're all, we're all in agreement on that. We all said it's been approved and all that stuff. Why the change for nine more three bedrooms versus two or one, whatever those changes are? What, what, why is that gonna make a huge difference to what you're gonna be able to sell or not sell? I just don't understand that. You're our town, you're our town. Yeah, sure. It wasn't, it wasn't a. James, it's Patrick with the Toll Brothers.
So, um, those nine additional bedrooms came from actually working with the planning board on, on this section of the community. Uh, originally in order to get the grading to work, um, the road slopes up, you know, going this way. Uh, these townhomes were rotated ninety degrees. Uh, it was very important for the planning board because of the TND. They wanted, um, as many of these front doors facing the main entry of Chappaqua Crossing when you're coming down the boulevard. So in doing so, when we, when you take these units and you now rotate them ninety degrees, where we would normally be allowed to transition grade much more naturally, you know, from, you know, laterally through the building, uh, we now have to make that grade up between the front door of a home and what's the rear entry of the garage. So given that these were predominantly all two-bedroom units, you know, what that creates is a, a pretty significant, uh, what we refer to as a drop slab. So that's the difference in elevation between your garage slab, where you park your car, and the first floor of your home. So in some cases, in these units up, this collection of nine to twelve units up here, we had instances where we were creating six, eight to ten steps in a garage, where someone would park their car and have to walk up, you know, potentially ten steps to get to their first floor. People who are looking for, or would be accepting of a two-bedroom home are predominantly an older buyer. The first thing off of their, you know, their checklist that they don't wanna deal with going forward are steps. So we did ask the planning board for some support in asking that we had some additional relief on the bedrooms in order to work with them to accommodate aesthetically what they're looking for from the TND. Uh, and for us to allow, you know, to have some functionality in the home, so we can market them to the people who'd be willing to deal with that condition.
So you can't sell, let me show you. You're telling me that a two-bedroom townhouse or is not a viable alternative for someone who's, let's say, in the city, they're having their first child, they wanna get a starter home at a lower price, at a single-family home in a great school district, in a great town. You're telling me that you can't sell that, that you have to make it a three-bedroom versus?
I will tell you that, you know, through a, a vast amount of, uh, history of marketing this product, when you're dealing with a bedroom restriction, the, the demographic that is most accepting of that bedroom restriction is the demographic that does not have children that need to occupy additional bedrooms. I mean, that's just probability and statistics, right? We need to cast as wide a net as we can to market the community effectively. So that was it. Was it just an example of give and take through the process with the, with the planning board?
And, and by the way, when they market these, to talk about the marketing things, I mean, again, it's gonna be deed restricted, so no basements, no, no bedrooms in the basement, but, and Jim, you could, you've said this before, I mean, when you, when they do their model homes, they're gonna, you're gonna display them as with recreational space.
Yes.
Half of it's gonna be storage and half's recreational space, because that's what these empty nesters are looking for. And that's who they think are gonna be moving into these things. That's who they're marketing into. They're gonna have the clubhouse, which is gonna be the Bedford house, there's gonna be a pool. They're looking for empty nesters for this.
Yeah, we've been over this before. What if you, oh, just curious, I'm just trying to understand. I get the models and all that, the history and the statistics, you got all these other homes you've built. But what if hypothetically, in the town of Chappaqua, Newcastle, that you have, you're getting families that are coming in versus single, older demographics, you're getting young families coming in with their first child, more so than you thought, the whole model changed upside down.
Well, they're, they're paying fee simple though, so they're getting, we're getting thirty-two, we're gonna get, these are gonna go for a million dollars, we're gonna be paying thirty thousand dollars in taxes. I mean, that's, that's why we did a fee simple. It's gonna accommodate that.
As, uh, Mark pointed out, you know, any, any, um, estimation or calculation that we're, we're asked to provide is typically on the, on the conservative side, when you actually fall back and look at actual data of who's living in the homes. So, so on, on a project like this, we would anticipate there being somewhere around a two-thirds, one-third split between the, the prototypical empty nester and on the, on the flip side of that, you know, what we would expect to be more of a younger professional. Um, that's not to say that empty nester will have zero kids, right? But they're usually transitioning in their lives, where they have, you know, if they had a family of, of, of four, maybe they have one kid that's already left to go to college and they have, you know, they got, they wanna stay local in town because they have their younger child who's finishing out their, their senior year, uh, within the district. So that's pretty, it's pretty typical.
And by the way, finished basements get assessed at a higher value, just for the, we didn't talk taxes. Any other public comments? We're not closing the hearing tonight, but any other public comment? Well, Christine, thank you. Warren, thank you for coming. Thank you, everybody for coming. So motion to adjourn until next week? Vote in favor. Vote second.
During ten, sorry, today for ten. Um, I just want to. Do you have much? Yeah.
Of course. Of course. Right.
I just want to.
Long and short. Relocation. Five section, let's be five section. To eliminate the one. As you mentioned. Five section. And also. Yes, they go to the advanced control. Yes, you're correct. I know some people who pay these property taxes.
You'd be, you'd be surprised, you'd be surprised at how many kids, the problem is.
But they're not gonna be townhomes.
No, John Maygen actually believed him at a good point. It's, it's true, actually. It's shocking. These guys in high schools send their kids to private schools. I can't even.
But there's also, but there's also an advantage, John, at the same time, there's also an advantage in keeping a empty nester where the empty nester is. But we saw in homes, it's become a five family.
But giving, giving you a situation. You know, she was pointing out that very hundred thousand dollars per kid. Those hundred thousand dollars. Though, that are, are private and I can't. But my case.
We must say, we don't see a special, uh, special kid. That just trips the freaking, trying to win though. I mean, oh, you, you have two extra kids, one special, that may just fill the budget. Or actually, you have two kids and you have both special.
John, that's why we want you removed. You can't be a empty nester. You're just a.
We still have this thing on, by the way.
All right, so, tell us about the Catskill Aqueduct shutdown.
Shutdown. So the Catskill Aqueduct shutdown is imminent. It is probably.
I've heard this before.
Yeah, um, they're, they really mean it this time.
Sure they do.
Yeah, it's like either the sixth or the ninth. And basically what's gonna happen is that we're gonna shift from where we get our water from. Um, okay, so the problem is, is that they have to do major repairs to the Delaware Aqueduct, which is leaking like a sieve. The problem is, is that they have to figure out a bypass path to get the water from point A to point B without using Delaware. So they're going to take and refurbish the Catskill Aqueduct, which is the aqueduct that we use to get the water from the Ashokan reservoir, which is our, our usual path. It's very economical, it doesn't cost us a lot of money to pump water from there, it's terrific. The problem is, is that since they have to take and refurbish it, um, and repair it, they have to take it out of service. So that's why we've installed these significant pumps at the New York Pump Station and gone through this whole, um, process of making sure that we are able to provide water to our residents during the ten-week shutdown that is imminent. Um, and the long and the short of it is, is that, um, the New York City has planned a series of these until, I think it's twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. It's gonna be a series of these ten-week shutdowns, it's in the fall when the water usage is the, um, lowest. Um, it's not to stress the system too much, but we're gonna be getting water from a different source. It is completely safe. Our, our water is filtered and, um, purified far greater than, will exceeding New York City standards, health standards. Um, but it may taste a little bit of hurt, and that's the long and the short of things. Um, we'd like to be able to send some FAQs out to the public. The DEP would like to look at our FAQs first before we send them out. Um, but, um, you know, we believe that people, that, you know, there are people that have very sensitive palates and that they may notice a difference in the taste in the water. And I don't want anyone to be alarmed that, you know, why does the water taste fine? And it's temporary, and then we'll get back our original water. But it's, unfortunately, it's still gonna be a little bit of a inconvenience for a very short period of time.
Well, are we, are we commenting on this?
Yeah.
I, I personally would change the first question to, why are we changing the water supply? Like basically, I mean, this really, that's, why? Like, why make the change? The reason is, they have to make repairs to the Catskill, uh, Catskill Aqueduct, and we're gonna be using the, uh, I'm sorry, the Delaware Aqueduct, we're using the, uh, the Catskill Aqueduct instead. But the question is, you know, why? Why are we changing the water supply? That's the reason why.
No, we're not using Catskill, we're using New Croton.
Yeah, it's, we gotta, it's, it's a little, yeah.
I think we need to clarify. It's a little complex.
Delaware is very complex.
Like they, because they, the, the ultimate end game is not to fix the Catskill Aqueduct. We're just a byproduct of, in fact, they have to fix the Delaware Aqueduct. So because of that, it sort of goes down.
Right. Right.
If you wanna, I can take out the whole part of the Delaware Aqueduct, but at the end of the day.
At the end of the day, you know, listen, it just comes down to people that say, why, why are we changing the water? The reason we have no choice. We're being forced to because they have to make these necessary repairs.
Okay.
And, uh, and then when is it gonna change, or will I notice a taste? And you have that already, and is it safe? And is it safe, I mean, I think that's really the most, really keep it simple, I mean, you did try to keep it simple with what, when, where and why, but.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's just too long, I I believe.
Yeah, it became a little too much.
A too simple.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Yeah.
And yeah, you don't need so many details, also like basically it's, they need to make repairs, they're taking it out of service, they're putting us on southern water supply.
Yeah.
And uh we need to uh.
Temporary and that's it.
That other New Yorkers are there anyway and it's all good.
It's only New York City water.
We have no, we have no, we have no choice and uh.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I can minimize it.
Still great, okay.
Yeah, all right, I'll cut it in half out of that, I'd like to get it down to like one second, so.
No, the shorter the better because uh you know.
Yep, okay.
Nobody's gonna read some of this complicated stuff, to be honest with you.
No.
I broke down a twenty page.
Well, the fact of the matter is that we're, we're a part of the system that provides water to nine million people in New York City. So come to the responsibility.
They don't care about that even, they just care about the fact that their water, their water may change.
I care what's gonna change, it's a little different.
My water comes from a pumping spring.
Actually, we should, we should add something in.
Being stewards of healthy water for New York City residents, I I I think it's, I was like, it's a point.
You know, something, come, come to think of it, we should add something in about.
There's at least five other people that's down to care about that.
Yeah, I'm a steward.
Shaves that cost them in water, you've been asked, like like the cost of my water go up.
They did, they did. It's the world wide, so.
Right.
That's that's a good.
No, we should put that in there.
But that's a good, yes.
And that's what people care about, the taste, the health and the cost.
People don't care about being stewards of water quality for nine million New Yorkers, they care about whether their bill's gonna go up.
We certainly do, but we.
Yes, they care about the taste, the cost.
I get it.
I I think on a superficial level, I think we're, right.
And the health.
That's human.
It's human, I think it's human, but I can do it too.
Listen, everybody's busy learning, you can't uh.
Casey, you care about it, don't you? Thank you.
Kinda, you say the yes.
All right, I move to approve the payment claims and the amount of hundred thirty seven, thirty hundred thirty seven dollars eighty six cents listed on the summary pre-check writing report, detailed, detailed reports, each repair.
We have a couple of. We're not talking about all the resolutions yet.
Yes, we are, we did the.
Well, you just initiated by the.
Well, you've got a parking study, just talk about change order.
No, no, we don't, we we've taken it off the agenda, because.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
That's all right.
Payment claims is after uh.
Yeah, payment claims and that.
No, that is.
So don't. Uh detailed report, each repair December third, two thousand nineteen, checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant list on a Wednesday, December fourth.
Sorry.
In the waiting years of our supervisor.
Second.
Well, in favor, aye.
Aye. I move to authorize the hiring of Jacqueline.
How do you know she was gonna say?
Trippaletti, the position of secretary is running board of appeals within the development department and annual salary of sixty five thousand, where eighty two dollars sixty cents to the start date. Effective December sixteenth of this year.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I move to award the bid for the twenty twenty coach bus to J H R transportation corporation. One nine two Cottage Street in the great municipality of Poughkeepsie, New York, one two six oh one, for twenty twenty projected trips as listed below.
Second.
Well, in favor, aye.
I move to award a bid for snow removal edge of Griffin's landscaping for the cost of snow and ice removal and the check the hammer is listed below. And before you do that, he was gonna, it was just to confirm about the language and make sure they're not playing overages and. So is it subject to council's review?
Sure, review, yes, subject to council review.
Second.
They are keeping hold of time.
Wait, listen, so we had a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Well, in favor?
I don't like the addendum of the motion.
I move to approve the use of.
You gotta be perfect, we only have three of us yet.
By the Chapel Car Rover on December thirty first, two thousand nineteen, from eleven P M to twelve thirty P M.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any add-ons, we did the Holocaust Human Rights uh thing?
Just severe.
We were gonna do it next week, is that okay, like a like a town board meeting or like it's televised or everything?
Okay.
For what?
You wanna approve them tonight?
Yeah, I think they just wanted to get it done, if you could.
Okay, um.
I'm gonna have to, it's okay.
Yeah, we could, we're fine.
I move to appoint the following residents to the Holocaust and Human Rights Committee. Diane Brizer, Rebecca Dolan, Cheryl Dorfman, Rhonda Reagan, Soldeid Michet, Naomi Fishman, Pat Pollak. Sarah Weissman and two student liaisons, Rachel Kyles and Sam Maxx.
Second, and that's for a two year term, right?
Mm-hmm.
Second, well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's effective like tomorrow, all right.
You hit it, Mark.
Court?
Tick tock. It's a treat, the reality is, starting plan there, April event, really.
Okay.
Anything else?
I move to adjourn.
I abstain.
I knew we were going back.
Oh, yes, we are, I wanna raise, I wanna be the supervisor of the day, for the day, I abstains.
You would wanna raise.
You are gonna donate.
You, a county legislator, thinking you're so important.
Second. Second. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, good night, everybody.